And if you would stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands for the nation of America in the judicial, liberatory, and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of Michigan and to the state for which it stands to do beautiful benefits, united by a belief in equal opportunity, justice for all. That's how I deal.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers, here. Spohman, here. Stevens.
Mayor Falcone.
Here. So the first thing we have is the approval of this evening's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Sandy, could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Sherpas? Yes. Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carried. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comments. If you do come forward for public comment, if you could provide your name and write down your name and address for Sandy, it would be much appreciated. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Okay, so the interview of the candidates for the fourth ward council position is what we're going to be doing this evening. So Marcus, would you like to step us through the process?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The purpose of tonight's special meeting is to interview the two candidates that we have, decide which one presumably the city council would like to appoint, make that appointment, and then look at the special election process this evening and presumably set a special election for filling the vacancy on a permanent basis for the remainder of the term that is set to expire a couple of years from now. The first part of this process this evening will be the interview portion. As a part of that portion, we have, we would like to randomly select who goes first. In the coffee mug by the city clerk are both of the names of the candidates. We can have someone from council pick it, we can have someone from the audience pick it, Sandy could pick it, I could pick it, but we need to first pick the candidate that will go first. During that interview, there will be six questions that we have prepared, using the same format that we used previously when interviewing candidates for the CWTA position. We just modified them slightly for this position. We would kindly ask that whomever is not being interviewed to await in our adjoining conference room, and then we'll grab that person and bring them in when it is their turn accordingly. So the first thing for council to look at doing would be randomly selecting who goes first.
Okay. Why don't we have Mr. Stevens do that, since he's already standing, he can move a bit up and down.
Perfect. Only one did.
Wiener, Splinter.
Thank you.
Mr. Reinhardt will go first. Okay.
Jeff, if you were right now, it'd be great. Mayor, members of the city council, in the packet that you have before you, it includes the applications received for both of the candidates. It also includes two question forms. If you want to take notes, you certainly can as we go through the interviews. I suggest that perhaps each of you take two questions.
We already figured that out.
Okay, perfect.
First of all, welcome.
You're welcome.
And thank you for expressing interest in serving on the council.
Thank you.
We'll just go ahead and get started with the questions that we have before us, and then maybe at the end, if there's anything additional that you want to add, we'll give you that opportunity.
Okay.
All right. So the first question is, the attendance at meetings. We meet on the first and the third Monday of each month, and the meetings last approximately one to three hours, depending on how many things we have on our agenda. And so with this, will your schedule permit you to have the flexibility to be here for those meetings?
Yes.
On a regular basis?
Yes, I work days during the week. I get out at 2:00, and if something ever comes up, I can go in early, because I start at 4:00 in the morning. So I get, my schedule's flexible there.
Okay. Sounds good. Because sometimes we have special, like, special meetings scheduled, and so you'd have that flexibility.
Yep.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. Hi, thanks for coming. Does your interest in serving on city council stem from a personal interest or goal? Is there something in particular you hope to accomplish while serving on city council? And why is serving on the council important to you? Please elaborate.
One reason was, is I felt that when I go to the election, when the council members are running, somebody should always run against one, just to make it more interesting. And I thought about it four, five years ago, but I've been in college and I've been going full-time, so there was no way I could get for meetings or that, so I didn't even try to run. And eventually, I'd like to run for House Representatives when I get older.
Do you, can I, there's a part of the question that says, is there something in particular you hope to accomplish?
No, just to get more involved with the community.
Thank you. I'm writing, I'll be right with you.
Yep.
You indicated that you someday would like to run for House of Representatives?
Yes.
Okay, the next question is related to decision-making. Sometimes council members are forced with making some decisions that aren't always popular, or they could be controversial, or considered controversial. Are you willing to take on the responsibility of making decisions that are in the best interest of the public, even though they may become or may be somewhat controversial? And could you explain your position on that, please?
Yeah, I, if it's in the best interest of the people you represent, I can't see why you wouldn't do it. I believe that it's all about the people, not about your personal goals. It's to represent everybody that's put you in the office. And I don't have a problem with being ridiculed. I've been there quite a few times over my life.
If you had a decision that you had to make and there was quite a bit of public discussion about it, what would you, how would you make your decision?
That way, what public opinion is, and what the best interest of the city and the public is. I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to base it on what I feel. I'd want to base it on what, lean towards more of what everybody else would want.
Thank you. If you could make one change or improvement over the things that you know about city government today, what would that change or improvement be?
Try to get more people to run for office and that.
And some more participation.
Yeah.
Why do you think that's important?
Because it shows, to me, it's part of being American, is you get to run, do city council and stuff like that. It's more, it's your, I'm trying to think of, your duty, and everybody should participate more than what they do.
Okay, thank you. The next question is, is about conflict of interest, and the question is, do you have any interest in or participate in any professional or personal activity that could lead to or be perceived as a conflict of interest if you become appointed?
No. No, I don't participate in nothing controversial that would be an issue.
So this is your opportunity to tell us a little bit about yourself, and what experiences and special skills or knowledge that you might have, any professional experience that would lend itself or contribute to you being a good council member.
I've worked at Lake City Forge for 29 years. I was on the Safety Council Committee there, the Employee Involvement Committee. I've been on, used to be on the baseball committee, Little League Committee in Lake City, back in the, I believe it was in the 80s, when I was assistant coach, or a coach, me and my dad coached team, and then I coached in McBain, too.
Is there anything additional that you would like to add?
No, I can't think of anything.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for putting your name in for this, we really appreciate it.
I had come to the last meeting, and I talked to my wife, I told her I was going to run, like I said back, but I couldn't do it with the school. Well, then I thought it was just a coincidence that they'd come open at the same time that I come to a meeting.
And you happened to live in the right spot.
Yeah, yeah, that was the other thing. Took me a little while to figure out what ward I lived in, but I had to do it.
All of us, yeah. Nice meeting you.
Yep, nice meeting all of you, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Yeah.
If Mr. Eller, Officer, if you could just let him into the conference room?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Should I be here?
Yes, please. Yeah. First of all, welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, and thank you for stepping forward and being willing to serve.
You're welcome.
Okay. The city council meets on a regular basis, the first and the third Monday of each month, at 6:00 PM, and the meetings usually run one to three hours. And the question that I'd like to ask you is if you see any problems being able to regularly attend that schedule, or any special meetings we may need to schedule?
I do not. When I retired from Baker College last winter, it allowed me a little bit more time than I had before. So I see no problems, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
You don't go anywhere in the winter?
No, ma'am.
For an extended period of time?
I'm a skier.
Okay. Thank you, thanks for coming, appreciate this. Does your interest, I'm reading this because we have, does your interest in serving on the city council stem from a personal interest or goal? Is there something in particular you hope to accomplish while serving on the city council? And why is serving on the council important to you?
Councilwoman, I have no agenda, at all. The reason that I decided that I would like to serve is, as I mentioned earlier, I have time now, and a number of friends and others in our community suggested to me that I might be a good person to serve, since I don't have any agenda, and I'm not a member of any faction or any other thing, and I also can get along pretty well with others, and that they encouraged me to try to do this, and I thought it would be a good thing for me to help my city.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next question is related to decision-making. Sometimes council members have to make tough decisions, sometimes the decisions they make may be a little bit controversial. They make decisions regarding the implementation of policies and programs. Are you willing to take on the responsibility of making decisions that are in the best interest of the public, even though they may be controversial? Please explain.
I will, absolutely, councilwoman. If you've read my background, you'll know that I spent six years as an officer in the United States Marine Corps, and I had lots of those times, I had to make decisions, some of them 13 months in Vietnam, where sometimes people didn't survive because of a decision I made. That was tough, but I had to make them. That was my job. And then I spent 24 years in the FBI, and ended up doing the same kind of things. And so I wouldn't have a problem with that sort of thing.
Yeah, you're probably well-trained to make decisions.
Yes, ma'am, I think I am.
And you...
Except at home, maybe.
Except at home? It's always different. It is, it is. Okay. Okay, based on what you know about city government, if you could make one change or improvement, what would it be?
Oh, it would, my suggestion would be that we all get along together and make compromises where they need to be made, and to get things done for our city, all of the time.
Sandy? This is regarding conflict of interest. Do you participate in or have any affiliation with anything that might be construed as a conflict of interest with being on city council?
No, no, ma'am.
Well, that's the last question, so this is your opportunity to tell us anything that we haven't asked of you that you want us to know, and it's a pretty broad question, so tell us about any activities, special skills, knowledge, or professional experience that you have that you feel would contribute to your effectiveness on the city council.
Okay, I'll try and keep it short.
Why should we select you?
Okay, I'll try and keep it short, because I've been, I've been to a lot of places and done a lot of things. As I mentioned earlier, you know, experience, I've got a lot of it. I spent those years in the Marine Corps as a leader and officer, 13 months in Vietnam, and I'm still here, which is good and a miracle, 24 years in the FBI, worked some of the most sensitive things we had in the Bureau. Most of my, a good portion of my career was spent working spy cases. And then, after I retired from the Bureau, proving my mother dropped me on my head when I was a baby, I went and taught high school for eight years. And then when I, we came up here, of course, my wife got a job teaching at Cadillac High School, and we came up here, and I ended up working at Baker College for 12 years, and taught there. And so from that end of it, I also, if you look at my information, you'll see that I have a bachelor's degree in teaching of social studies in the secondary schools, a master's degree in educational leadership, an emphasis on administration, and a second master's degree in political science, and a year of doctoral work in political science. And the only reason I didn't finish that was, back in that time, they were really into publishing, and not so much teaching, and I wanted to be a teacher, and that's how I ended up teaching high school. And also, I coached cross-country and girls' track, and I enjoyed the heck out of all that stuff, because I was a little older by that time. And so I think, you know, my education, my work experience, and my life experience would enable me to do a good job here for my city. We've lived here 14 years now, and I consider this my city.
Wonderful. Was there anything additional that you'd like to add?
Oh, I'm sorry, anything you would...
Anything additional that you'd like to add?
I don't think so, not, if you all decide that I would get selected, I'm sure I have a lot to ask.
Okay, all right, well, fair enough. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So now, you're invited to stay, we'll bring back the other candidate. It would be appropriate for the city council to discuss, anything that you'd like to discuss as it relates to the interviews that were just conducted, followed with somebody then making a motion accordingly to approve a resolution that appoint one or the other candidate to the open vacant position. And then right after that's done, the city clerk will do the oath. Thank you.
So I just want to clarify something, and maybe it helps clarify it for these two gentlemen also. So when we appoint somebody this evening, they will serve until the special election in March?
And that's...
Oh, you're going to talk about that later, aren't you?
Yeah, that's going to be the next item of our...
Okay, then I don't need clarification at this time. But it's not for two years, it's until the next election.
Until the next election.
That's good. Good. So, okay, so...
Oh, I think we have two excellent candidates, aren't we lucky?
Yeah.
It's really a gift, and it's hard to make a decision based on six questions. I've been interviewing a lot of staff lately, I've had a lot of vacancies. Can you tell I do this for a living, it seems like lately? And sometimes the decisions are really hard to make. I had a couple more questions, I don't know if there's a possibility of asking more questions or not, or maybe we don't need to. I'll just throw that lunch in there. You like lunches on Thursday afternoon?
We love them, except the council's buzzer.
So questions of the candidate?
Yeah.
Are you comfortable asking of those women here? Okay, then I say, let's do it.
Okay. Let's start out with Mr. Keith, then we'll go in opposite order. Thanks for embossing me on this. It might help us make our decision. And actually, you alluded to it at the end of the last question, you said something about, I'll have a lot more questions if I get appointed. So if you were appointed, what would you need from us, council members, mayor, and city manager, et cetera, to make your experience work well for you when you get started?
Oh, good question. I think probably, for me, it would be to understand how things go in the meetings, and what specific thing would be asked of me as a member of the city council. So I think that would be it, mainly procedural things, more than anything else.
Yeah, I think that's always hard to learn when you're first coming.
It is, but I think that, you know, whoever's appointed, at least what I found coming in, that there are a tremendous amount of resources and people sitting around you that will help along that way, so you will be comfortable in your learning.
Thank you, that's what I would anticipate, sure.
So the second question is somewhat related, but what would, you've probably given some thought to this, so what would be the first few things you would do if you were appointed to city council?
The first few things I would do? Be one or two, or however... Well, you know, I would come to the meetings, obviously, and I would be one of the first things, and I would do, I would do my best to learn what it is, the things that I would need to do on the council. I know I'm repeating myself, but I mean, that's what it would be. I'm not concerned about being a member, so to speak, but it would take some time to be really effectively a part of the city council, and that's what I would really want to do. That would be my, the first few things I'd like to do.
Great, thank you. Good, thank you. Mr. Reinhardt? Did I say your name right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a case I...
Yeah, go ahead, come on, just a second.
So if you were appointed to city council, what would you need from us, council members, mayor, and city manager, et cetera, to make your public service experience work well?
I'd just have to understand exactly what the duties are, and I have an idea, but to get more clarification on that, and what my role is, and what we would do in the meetings. I've been to a couple of meetings, but, you know, I understand what happens there, but to understand more about what's going on in the city and the community.
Good. And what would be the first few things, or one or two things, that you would do if you were appointed?
I'd come to meetings, and I'd do as much investigation on lying through the websites and stuff, on what the council has done over the years, and what's pending, what actions are going on right now, and if there's anything pending out there that I should know about, and get as much information as possible.
Yeah. Some of those hot-button issues, maybe, huh?
Yep.
Okay, good, thank you. As Councilmember Spohman said, it's a blessing and a bane to have two people step up willing to do this. As you might imagine, it's not always the best, sweetest, most rewarding thing that a human being could do with their Monday nights, but it's a vital and essential thing. And I really appreciate you both stepping up to volunteer for this. I'm thinking that, based on, can I say what my...
You can say it, are you...
I'm thinking that based on experience, and, you know, resume, and the wealth of backgrounds that Mr. Keith brings, is something that we could really use here. His experience with the military and with the FBI, making decisions, having the courage to make those decisions, and I think also based on his response about what changes you'd like to see, is to look at there being a, it wasn't how to put it, but compromise and do what needs to be done to get the job done without becoming, all the time, and that to me would be, feel like heaven. So I'm leaning in that direction, I'm leaning toward Mr. Keith, for all those many reasons.
I guess I would tend to agree with you, based on experience alone, although I certainly would be pleased with either one of these candidates. I think they're both excellent, and I really appreciate them willing to put themselves here tonight and to apply for this appointment. It does appear that Mr. Keith has more experience in decision-making, and looking at policy, and education, and political science, and could probably step right into the role with very little training, or, no, you don't get a lot of training in these positions.
Fire by fire.
Could move right into it, and, yep. And I do appreciate his comments, too, about wanting to work together to get things done on behalf of the city.
The only other thing that I would add is that, you know, this process, you know, as you said earlier, Mr. Reinhardt, more people need to get involved, and this interview process is so important, because if we had gotten 10 candidates, I think it would be important for us to have the opportunity to talk to all 10 of them. Because tonight, we have to make a decision in regards to this position, but we have a lot of other things in, within the city, that can keep everybody's interest and their involvement. You know, so if this evening, one of you is not appointed, there's going to be an election in March. And there's also volunteer opportunities within the city that will help you to start growing that understanding, that base knowledge... growing that understanding, that base knowledge of the city government, and how you might be involved in the future. This isn't the last thing that's going to come open, and we certainly would encourage whoever isn't appointed this evening to come back and be a part of the future of Catalina. So, thank you both.
Mayor, members of the council, just to iterate, there are open volunteer spots on our boards and commissions. Those are available on our website, and you have a list, so definitely encourage people to...
I keep that list with me all the time, because it's my goal to get all of those seats filled, so that all of our committees are at full strength, and as many people are involved as can be. So, I'd be happy to share that. With that, are you comfortable in making a motion?
Um, let me find my paperwork. Hello, is this what I'm looking for? I would like to hear this. I don't have a resolution number, but I make a motion to, let's see, I haven't done this before. Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution, appointing Alvin Keith III to the fourth ward council position.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Spillman?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carried.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both, very much.
At this time, it would be appropriate for our city clerk to issue the oath of office.
Just please. I will, I do when I'm finished. I declare square that I support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter and ordinances of the city of Catalina, and will faithfully perform the duties of the office of fourth ward council member, according to the statute of law.
Thank you.
Thank you. There. Thank you. You'll have to come along later, about, get your...
Thank you, councilmember.
Yeah, you, councilwoman, someday. I will be back tomorrow.
No, right now?
Oh, I will, I will, sure. No problem. I didn't know if I might come back then, or come back this minute. I'll do it.
So, we literally put him to work right away?
Right away.
Yes. I'll clean it up there, sir. So, I'll get him to sit right under the market.
Wow, that's faster than Alexa's.
I got it right here.
You're gonna sit right here, Mike?
Thank you.
Okay.
And you thought you were gonna get trained.
That's right. I've got a full orientation ready to, ready to go.
Can you help him with his chair? His chair is like...
He could sit in that one.
Yeah. Take that chair, 'cause that chair, you look like, like you're at the kids' table.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next thing on the agenda.
Okay.
Which is to discuss and potentially establish an election date for fourth ward council position.
Yes, thank you, mayor, and members of the city council. Before you this evening is a copy of a piece of correspondence that was sent to the county clerk's office regarding our vacancy situation, and it describes the, essentially, what we're gonna be requesting this evening, which is to get a special election set for the March primary date. We also have a resolution prepared for you this evening that sets that as well. City attorney, Mike Homier, will essentially walk us through how we got to the position that we're in today regarding looking at the March date, so...
So, there is a, as you may know, a presidential primary in March, and so the House Bill 4904 was passed and sent to the governor's office to make that election date, March 8, 2016, a regular election under the Michigan election law. That means that because it's a regular election, and falls outside of sixty days after the vacancy was created by the resignation of Mr. Melama, that the city council then has to call an election for that date. So, that's how we arrived at the March 8 date. The more interesting and troublesome question was, then, how do you determine what the date is for submitting nominating petitions? And for that, we consulted with Bureau of Elections, and this issue is not covered under Michigan's election law. And so, they didn't have really good answers for us in terms of that date. What they did suggest, and what we believe is prudent, is that the city comply with its charter provision. And the charter provision says eight weeks prior to the election is when you can file the nominating petition. That creates some problems for the Wexford County clerk, because it speeds up the process by which absentee ballots must be out, particularly to military and overseas voters who may want to vote absentee. So, it creates a short window. But there is no other state or federal law which would otherwise preempt the city's charter provision requiring eight weeks. So, as much as I feel for the county clerk in having to turn around this, these nominating petitions and ballots, the city has no other choice. So, in anticipation that the city would set the March 8 election date as a special election for filling the position for the remainder of the term, we sent correspondence to the county clerk on December the 1st, notifying her of the deadline, which is January 12th, by which nominating petitions must be submitted, to give her enough head-up and time to try and deal with that. We had, we had spoken to the county clerk before we'd sent the correspondence, so she understood that it may be coming. And as much as we don't necessarily like the rush either in getting the nominating petitions done, our opinion is, is the city does not have a choice and has to comply with its charter.
So, there's an eleven day window?
There's an eleven day window. That's correct. And it's gonna be a tight window, there's no doubt about that, but, and, we also looked, we also looked at state and federal law to determine whether there was any, any provision that would preempt our eight week requirement under the charter. We, again, consulted with the Bureau of Elections, looked at state and federal law, and we also asked the county clerk if they understood any provision of the law that might preempt it to give them ten weeks. They wanted ten weeks prior to the election as the deadline for nominating petitions. That would've given them two additional weeks. But there's no provision that otherwise preempts our charter, and we have to comply.
So, that means that there's a, what'd you say, how many days from the time you pick up the petition to get it, get your signature, or...
So, the nominating petitions must be submitted by January the 12th.
Okay.
That's eight weeks prior to the election. Ten weeks prior to would've shortened the period of time by which you could get nominating petitions in by two weeks, so...
Right, right, okay.
And it's still a tight deadline, I mean, you know, we're in the holiday season, and...
Right, so they become available tomorrow?
Yeah, I guess that's a, that's a question for Sandy to work out with the county as well, on when the nominating petitions become available. So, I think they're available at any time prior to January the 12th, so...
So, following any council discussion or further questions, the action tonight would be to consider the adoption of the resolution that would set the special election date.
So, where was the county at with this? Where did you leave it with the clerk, with Elaine?
So, with Elaine, we left it at, "We don't have a choice unless you can..."
But does she think it's doable?
It's pretty tight, and she knows it, and we know it, and we just, from our, from the city's perspective, we don't have an alternative.
Well, we've, we've worked more than eight weeks out before.
More than eight weeks from...
The election.
The election, yes, because there's now a provision that is fifteen weeks prior, which does preempt you in the normal case. This is not a normal case. This is not otherwise a general election under the Michigan election law. It is special legislation that was signed by the governor to make it a regular election because of the presidential primary. So, while you're right, it would otherwise be fifteen weeks prior to the election. Our charter then kicks in, because there's no other state or federal provision.
I was just trying to figure out a way to give her a extra week or two.
Yeah, I, yeah, so are we.
We have to follow it in the charter.
Yeah, and when we, like I said, we consulted a number of times with the Bureau of Elections on the same issue, trying to find a provision that would allow us to go to ten weeks, but there just isn't one.
But it says not later than five o'clock on the eighth Friday, so it could be earlier.
Yes, I mean, they, right, but you couldn't, you're gonna hold it open until that day and time, no matter who turns what in. But yes, they could, the other ones could be processed prior to that.
Are you thinking that, can it be earlier in the day? No, I was thinking earlier, as in, a week or two. Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, it's another reason to open the charter, unfortunately, and the charter has to reflect what happens in reality, and elections have changed.
I agree. There are a number of charter provisions that are outdated because of changes to state law, and for our purposes, we just ignore them, but if you are, if you are a member of your city and you're looking at it, you don't know that it's preempted in most situations.
Well, I think now is a, is really a good time to look at opening that charter to address several different things that we've come across, and I think the reason that it's a good time is because we still have links on it, some of the people who were there, who understand why they set the current charter up the way they did, and they'll also understand what needs to be updated, and they'll be good mentors to others who will be a part of that process.
So, I'm all for following the charter in this regard, I'm just not all for it if it's not easily physically possible to do, because of whatever technology or whatever the situation may be, like other laws have changed, I don't even know what, you know, by when does you have to have all of the absentee ballots prepared?
Eleven days later.
Sandy doesn't...
Yeah, but...
Our city clerk isn't thrilled either, because we do, do the manhust.
Is it possible to do it, in your opinion?
The concern was the military ballots.
Is it what?
It is the military ballots. That is a concern. The concern is getting the actual ballots ready at printer, and then having them available to meet the military requirements that we have, where you say law.
What happens if it doesn't happen? What happens if you don't get enough window to do the military ballot? Does that invalidate or make the election somehow invalid?
There are possible fines, I don't think.
Sandy?
Have we checked with the printer?
Do we need to have a work bee?
Have we checked with the printers to see if we can get that process expedited? And is there anything you can do in providing those absentee ballots to help expedite them?
I haven't talked to them. Elaine will actually be here tomorrow.
Okay. I mean, you disimposed it, or whatever.
Okay. Well, I think they don't know, we haven't gotten a definite yes from Elaine on whether or not this is possible to do.
Well, I think she would, I don't wanna speak for her, I think she would give us the same answer that Sandy gave you, which is, "We're gonna do our best and try and get it done." I mean, you're, from the city's perspective, we're gonna comply with the charter. That's our obligation, and that's our recommendation. After that, then, everybody tries to comply with other laws that may be applicable as well, to the best extent they can. But you're, we have eleven days from the day the nominating petitions are due under our charter to get that done.
Is the printer a local printer, or somebody far away?
It's all done through the county.
Done through the county?
Yeah.
The two clerks are meeting tomorrow to discuss election stuff as part of the audit.
Can we get an update on things on Monday at our meeting?
Sure, but I'll say, tonight, the update really might not be of much context, other than, we're gonna have to try our best to make sure we comply.
Okay. Maybe we can provide some Red Bull when they're meeting, or something like that, so that they have that, you know?
Caffeinated beverages?
Yes, yeah. Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution calling for a special election to fill the city council vacancy, and the special election being on March the 3rd.
The 8th.
The 8th, thank you. March the 8th, 2016. I'll get the second, I'll do that.
Okay, thank you. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spillman?
Yes.
Spillman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carried. And with that, I think that completes all of our business for this evening, so we'll adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. So, I gotta get nominating petitions before...